Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Education Work Session. We are starting a little earlier today at 2:30. We have two larger agenda items, one from Special Education Services and also the final draft of our enrollment plan. But up first is our Special Education Services Self-Assessment Update. So I will turn it over to Jill McKenna and her team.
Good afternoon, Board Chairman Haffey, Superintendent Moore, members of the board. I'm here today with Special Education Services Senior Directors Pam Doak, who is our Senior Director for our Instructional and Social Behavior Programming Teams, Candace Witherspoon, who is our Senior Director for our Policy Compliance Team, and Bruce Page, who is our Senior Director for Family and Community Connections and Related Services. And we are here today to provide you with an update on the self-assessment work that we've engaged in over the last year. We should have a presentation coming soon if you all are okay. I'm going to keep going. Perfect. Excellent. Okay. So this afternoon, we're going to re-ground you in the self-assessment process by providing an overview of the information shared in the June Student Achievement Committee meeting. We will then spend some time reviewing the district recommendations included in the final report, discuss activities that Special Education Services has engaged in as we have begun to unpack the report, and then conclude by sharing our next steps in the work. As you know, last year, the district entered into a contract with District Management Group, which is also referred to as DMG, to conduct a departmental assessment focused on two areas. The first focus area centered on identifying potential improvements to district processes related to issue resolution. The second focus area was around special education programs and services. As part of that process, DMG reviewed district databases and documents, they conducted an inventory of programs, and engaged stakeholders through focus groups. In addition, there were regional programs that were identified for further focus, and for those programs, they conducted a survey around the curriculum resources and instructional strategies. This work began in December of 2021 and concluded in June. In early July, we received the final report, and that full report is linked at the bottom of your slide. During the June Student Achievement Committee meeting, two members of the District Management Group team shared specific information with you around the methodology and the findings for each of the focus areas. Before moving into the recommendations, I want to take a few moments to remind you of the findings that were previously shared. For Focus Area 1, related to the issue resolution process, DMG identified three primary areas of challenge: roles and responsibilities, knowledge and resources, and relationships and communication. Additionally, they mapped out the typical resolution process and noted factors that lead to successful issue resolution and areas of opportunity. Those success factors and opportunities are directly linked to those three areas of roles and responsibilities, knowledge and resources, and relationships and communication. For Focus Area 2, related to special education programs and services, DMG first identified program strengths. Specifically, those strengths were dedicated teachers and staff who are committed to serving as strong liaisons for families, the strategic shift to what we have referred to as back-to-base, so moving our specialized programs back to base schools or closer to home, to help foster more inclusive environments, an enhanced focus on inclusion across the district, access to more responsive and appropriate placements by configuring programs that focus on how students access the content and curriculum, and high-quality instructional tools and supports for students with unique needs. DMG then outlined the framework through which they presented program opportunities and recommendations. The framework grounded opportunities and recommendations in strategy, so having the right programs to support students, implementation, that's how we align our systems and structures to deliver those programs, and then stakeholder engagement and communication. This second work stream included a more targeted focus on five specific specialized programs: our elementary behavior support programs, or what we refer to as EBS; extended content standards programs, or ECS programs; cross-categorical kindergarten, which is also referred to as CCK; and then two programs that serve students with more significant disabilities are multiple disabilities classrooms, which are sometimes referred to as MU programs, and our intellectual disability severe programs, or ID severe classrooms. Using the outlined framework, DMG offered both district-wide and program-specific recommendations. For today, we're going to focus on the district-wide opportunities and recommendations. The program-specific recommendations are very similar to those district-wide recommendations, but how they manifest is just a little bit different across each of those programs. All right. So now that we've re-grounded in information that was previously shared, we're going to move into the recommendations that were included in that final report that we received in July. The recommendation for issue resolution did not change the typical process flow. We would continue to follow a similar path by first identifying the problem and then investigating that problem. From there, teams collaborate around potential solutions, they make decisions, and then there's monitoring and follow-up on those decisions. Rather, the recommendations grounded in this framework, grounded this process in a framework that leverages prevention, empowerment, and engagement activities that would enable the schools and the districts to more effectively and efficiently resolve issues related to special education services. The work in this area would include clarifying expectations and actions through a resolution process map, in addition to implementing initiatives within this framework. Specific recommendations were provided for how we can better engage, empower, and prevent. So we're going to look at those more specific recommendations for each of those areas. When we look at the engagement piece of the framework, two main areas emerge: relationships and knowledge management. Recommendations related to relationships include both activities within the schools, such as ensuring that there are clear relationship maps, so parents have a point of contact at each school, and then ways that the district can support family networking opportunities in collaboration with agency partners through our Special Education Advisory Council, or what's referred to as CAC. Additionally, recommendations included examining and refining ways in which we're building the knowledge of families around the special education process and the resources available. While Special Education Services currently offers learning opportunities for families in the spring, we do know that this would mean expanding some opportunities, that we can really explore how we're onboarding families to that special education process throughout the year, and improving our public website so that it becomes a better resource for families. Where the engagement piece focused more on the supports for families, the empowerment piece offered recommendations that were aimed primarily at staff, and this was around staff training and knowledge management. In addition to resolution training for staff, DMG recommended that a formal role for a policy and special education expert be created at each school, and that the person who is in that role would receive more in-depth training. Additional recommendations to empower staff include refining the policy handbook, developing formal IEP meeting management resources, such as agenda templates, and developing plans and requirements around parent communication related to IEP processes and issues. The final enabling opportunity in this framework is prevention, and that specifically focuses around issue analysis. This includes district-level work around creating consistent issue-tracking systems and processes, and engaging in regular reviews of the issue trends to identify strategies that could prevent the issues from occurring. As we engage in this prevention work, the steering committee that was involved in the self-assessment process, and as a reminder, that included district-level representatives from various departments, as well as a principal representative, could continue to be engaged to collaborate around possible solutions. As we move into the district-wide recommendations for programs and services, we're shifting to a different framework. As I shared earlier, the framework for the second focus area is grounded in strategy, implementation, and stakeholder engagement and communication. So again, looking at the right programs to support students and how we're aligning our systems and structures to be able to deliver those programs. Within the first construct of strategy, two recommendations were made: to refine the vision and description for specialized programs, and to clarify the alignment between student needs and the required resources. Specifically within this, we are looking at accurately capturing and describing how students and their complex needs are served, and what adjustments may be needed to program names so that we are accurately reflecting the service, rather than having naming conventions that are based on specific disability categories. Implementation looks at our systems and structures, such as program management protocols, staffing, and instructional strategies. Four district-wide recommendations were provided in this area. First, to enhance the professional learning for school-based administrators. This would focus on building knowledge around what constitutes a strong special education program, and building their skills in developing and overseeing programs within their schools. The second recommendation looks at the process for evaluating student needs and determining program placement. This would involve streamlining and clarifying protocols that could be used at both the school and the district level. Recommendation 3 is enhancing the professional learning for teachers and instructional assistants. While there are many trainings already available, this work would involve looking at ways that we can build additional hands-on and observational learning opportunities, as well as collaborative workshops for teachers who are in similar programs at different schools. It also includes examining how we strategically increase support to newly opened programs and to new staff. The final recommendation in this area is refining the connection between the core instructional strategies and structures, and how they support the unique design of each of the programs. After that refinement, we can then work with schools to collaborate around supplementary aids and, or, I'm sorry, supplementary materials. Supplementary aids is an IEP term. Supplementary materials and resources that they can use in addition to that core instructional The last piece of this framework is stakeholder engagement and communication. Two recommendations in this area were made, and they are intertwined throughout all of the work. This includes ensuring clear, consistent messaging, offering opportunities to articulate questions and concerns, and developing plans to ensure that necessary information is received by relevant stakeholders in a clear and easy-to-understand manner. The final section of the report provided general recommendations for district oversight and management structures. So the first opportunity that you see is, was touched on in previous recommendations as well: the student assessment and placement protocols. Generally speaking, the process for assessment, observation, and placement is strong. However, the processes and the procedures are not consistently implemented or understood across the district, and some stakeholders did indicate that they were unclear on how student placements were made. In some areas of the process, the work was also duplicative, and there was an overlap in roles and responsibilities between school and district-level staff. The recommendations focus on creating a more streamlined and effective approach by clarifying and codifying the process, and specifically identifying the roles of school-based and district-based staff in the assessment and observation process. The second opportunity also aligns with previous recommendations. School-based administrators serve in a critical and sometimes underutilized role that could enhance specialized programs. The recommendations here look at ways that Special Education Services can provide ongoing support and structure for school-based administrators, to build both their knowledge and their confidence in supporting specialized programs, and to integrate programs into the school community. Specific work to support this includes developing practical walkthrough guides, and examining and developing training for administrators in the skills needed to better support unique specialized programs. The final opportunity again aligns with previous recommendations. So special education teachers are highly dedicated and effective professionals. The recent shortage of special educators has heightened the need for a greater support for educators. This requires a targeted focus on how to leverage specific strategies, structures, and materials, and providing professional learning that is augmented by cross-school collaboration. As we refine and enhance the support to educators, Special Education Services will also need to consider how we're currently staffed at the district level, so that we are able to provide an increased level of support to individual school-based educators. I do want to note that the report does recommend that this district-level consideration look at coordinating teacher staffing. In the June Student Achievement Committee meeting, board members indicated that while the recommendations might address those staffing levels, you all had a desire for Special Education Services to look at improvement strategies that we could make within the current district-level staffing. So with that in mind, as we continue to unpack the recommendations, we are looking at ways that staff are structured, and adjustments that can be made to the current structure that would enhance our level of school-based support, without discussing the increased staffing level at this point. So those are the district-wide recommendations in the report. So now we're going to share a little bit about what we have done and the work we've engaged in around the recommendations, and then our next steps with that. So the Special Education Services leadership team has begun to review and unpack both the findings and the recommendations in the report. As part of this, we've examined the work that is currently in process, and where this aligns or where this doesn't align with the recommendations in the report. As an example, Special Education Services annually updates our program description document. Moving forward in consideration of these recommendations, we also want to ensure that we're clearly refining and communicating the vision of the programs, as well as describing the services in that document, in a way that's clear to the stakeholders. Another area of alignment is around that issue trend analysis. So currently, we conduct a yearly analysis of the trend and the issues that we see, and this would be an area that we could look at more frequent quarterly reviews of those issue trends. Special Education Services leadership has also begun to categorize the recommendations. The report offers the recommendations tied to the two specific work streams, but in order to plan for that connected and streamlined work across both focus areas, we've looked at these through the lens of supports to teachers, supports to administrators, supports to families, and then district management protocols. The activities around unpacking the report to this point have been carried out by Special Education Services leadership. We're going to continue our work on prioritizing the recommendations. Once those recommendations have been prioritized, Special Education Services district teams will develop specific action steps and timeline for the work. The outcome of this will be a five-year Special Education Services strategic plan that is in alignment to the district's strategic plan, and we do intend to keep the board updated on our progress in this work through future Student Achievement Committee meetings. So we welcome any feedback that you have or questions that you may have regarding the report or our action steps.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. This is very thorough, and appreciate this summary along with the attached report. Are there comments, Superintendent Moore, that you want to make before we start?
I'll just make one additional comment. While we noted during the beginning of the presentation that the report from DMG was bookmarked on a slide, it is also a second attachment in SimBli, so that it's available that way also.
Board members, questions, comments? Vice Chair Hagerty.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation today. One of the things that I saw in the recommendations and resolutions that really stood out to me was the talk about establishing a clear relationship maps, because when we talk to special education parents, I think that one of the things that we'll run into is maybe some early frustration of not knowing exactly who to call or who the appropriate point of contact is. And that's something that should be, you know, a pretty simple fix that we can put in early on to help improve the process, and looking at it, it really applies to all levels, right? It could be, you know, students with IEPs and 504 plans, it could be parents that have questions about AIG testing, right? It could be, you know, where there's a disciplinary issue versus like a plan modification issue, a request for support services. Having those relationship maps and having them easily accessible by website or, you know, in initial materials that go out to students, I just think could do a lot. I loved the way that you laid everything out in the issue identification program early on with identification, investigation, communication, collaboration. As, you know, by the time some of the issues get to us at the board, you know, it's, there's been a problem that has gotten so bad that it's, you know, maybe led to litigation. And being able to kind of step in, understand where people are coming from, and trying to mediate those situations very early, to get an acceptable resolution early, could help everybody: staff, families, everybody in the process. So I know that's something that, with Ms. Hamilton, we'd talked about several times, and I was unaware of all the work that's actually done already on the front end to try to identify, but I know sometimes it's hard to identify when there is a problem until the district gets like an official notice of a complaint or something coming along. So all of these steps to improve communicationally in the process, I think, are wonderful, and I really encourage you to put, you know, to put your efforts there. This is, this is good stuff, and let us know how to support it. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. Ms. Waters?
Thank you so much for this work. As a family who benefits from this personally, I really appreciate all your work, and I love that you highlighted the dedication of specialized teachers and staff and the work that they do. They are amazing. And so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the move for the specialized programs. I know it often comes up with preschool families about the placement of the programming and the regional programs. Is that part of the conversation in the work that you do to try to make sure that there is alignment with, and I know that there are lots of different programs that you have in the preschool area, but families sometimes get attached to a school community, and they love the staff there, but sometimes they will end up at a different school. So is that a part of the process that you all looked at and included when you were doing your work?
So this, this particular study did not include a specific look around the preschool programs. As we continue to move the work forward, part of that is working with Mr. Ko and Jenam Ramsey, who oversees the special education preschool programs, on how we can better align some of that with the information that we now have on, on the regional programs that were looked at.
Okay. And a second question. In terms of community engagement, do you use a particular framework or model to determine how you will engage with families? I know sometimes there's the use of surveys or the use of focus groups, but I wonder how do you determine that is the best way to engage with families? Because there are a number of models that help identify, based upon what your goal is, whether you are just trying to inform the families, or if you're trying to collaborate with families, that there are different tools that are most effective. So I just wondered, do you have an actual framework that you use to determine how to best engage with families as you move forward to enhance the community engagement work?
So the, the engagement efforts up to this point have really been around both, of course, you know, problem-solving at the individual level, but then looking at what are those things that we are frequently getting calls about and issues that kind of creep up for families, and then using those to develop training sessions, training opportunities, family engagement opportunities from there. So the continued work around this with that feedback loop, we've just started to kind of unpack and look at these recommendations, and then that next step is going to be to talk about what, how can we, how can we have a better engagement feedback loop for those stakeholder groups to make sure that we really are meeting the families' needs as we're developing these. Mr. Page's team has, has done a lot of work of engaging families and increasing visibility in schools this year in a variety of areas, and events out in the community, so that we're trying to build those relationships there, so that when we then move into a space of so that when we then move into a space of increased stakeholder groups and those kind of focus groups around these areas, we already have some of those relationships developed with families as well.
Well, that's good. I'm just a strong advocate for a lot of the models that are really based in data that helps to identify the best way to engage with families based upon your goal, whether you are just, like I said, just seeking to inform or whether you are looking to do something more meaningful, but establishing or identifying a model that can really kind of guide and lead that work. So, thank you once again for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Ms. Cash?
I just, on the one slide, you said something about the Buddy program. Can you expound on that a little bit more?
One of the recommendations was around how we can help, help families be able to network with other families as well and how we would be able to partner with community agencies to help support some, some of that work, not just around the networking for things that they might need through the school system, but also building those networks with the community resources that are available and how to access the community resources and to, and to have kind of parent, parents that they can go to who, who understand the experience of navigating that as a family.
What would be an example of a community resource?
So, our, we, we do have a Special Education Advisory Council, and that is made up of a variety of agencies. So, that would include places like The Ark, Gigi's Playhouse, Alliance, Hope Services, Autism Society. So, a variety of, and I, I, I want to be sure to say that I only named just a handful of them. There are a whole lot more involved. For those, for those who are watching, I, I just want to make sure that there are a whole lot more. So, it's, it's really leveraging our relationships with those community agencies and the partnerships and the supports that they can help to provide families as well.
Ms. Kushner?
Thank you. And to, and to follow up on that, how often is that advisory committee meeting? And is it a robust, you know, attendance? I think it's, when I first came on the board, I attended those meetings just to be able to get a small view of the complexity of the work at the school, and I found it very useful and a very robust and dedicated group of parents and advocates.
Yeah. Pre-pandemic, there were regular meetings. It was a very robust group. There were challenges, as there were in a variety of areas, in, in how to continue that work through the pandemic. So, that has now recently started back up again. The agency groups meet every month, and then every other month, we meet with them as well, too. So, we, we started kind of our first meeting back up with them in, in this fall. We're meeting again in December. We have a meeting scheduled in December. So, with, with us, it's every other month, and then as community agencies, they meet every month.
That's, that's good, because I think that's the important partnerships for, I mean, we can't do this alone. We've seen how much we need our community, and to your point, they certainly can, can spearhead this Buddy program, help parents feel less isolated and less alone in their, their journey along, you know, when they have students that have these needs. Because I have to, I was struck by the low response rate to the focus groups among parents, and it is just a difficult time, and it might just, and I was glad to see DMJ tried again and did a second round. So, do you feel you got enough feedback from the community and from families in our focus groups? That, that was some, one concern in reading through the report for me.
So, I, I do feel like we have enough feedback that would support the recommendations that we received. I think as we move the work forward, we will want to gather additional feedback as we're really developing what those specific action steps are to go with the recommendations.
That it's not a one-and-done, and we're going to keep that window open. Good, good. And, and in my time on the board, another thing that's come up is just the, and I was glad to see that in the report as well, is the intensity of IEP meetings and sort of the sterile was one word that I saw in the report. So, is that something, but I didn't quite see it in the recommendations. Maybe I missed it. Is there strategies that you'll be looking at just to, to make that a bit more family-friendly or, or less of a, a formal process? Although it needs to be formal. I understand that. Policy focus here, so I understand that.
Yeah. So, the, the formalness will, will always be embedded within the, the IEP process itself. I think some of those management structures as we move forward with the recommendations around the IEP meeting management structures with, with agendas will make them feel formal in some ways, but help with that predictability for parents. And then the other kind of key piece that would come in is really the, the relationship mapping and the relationship building with families that will, will take a formal meeting and help make it feel maybe not so sterile.
Yeah. And I mean, because it's intimidating, and I think y'all can see that when, because you've done them. But, and so when I saw the recommendation around that, it, it struck me as being a navigator. I don't want to see the exact, I don't want to misstatement, but, but there was one recommendation around an expert at the school level who can, it just seems like a navigator ombuds type position that I think would be amazingly proactive for the district to have. So, Superintendent Moore, whether that's a, a case that, you know, for the budget in the coming year, I would hope that would be a recommendation that would rise to the top because I think that's what parents want and families want is just to be able to understand the process and know how to access things. So, I think there's, there's a lot of great stuff in this report that can give them those resources.
And I, so I do want to clarify that particular recommendation as well. So, part of that came out of the stakeholder feedback from school-based staff as well, too, needing to have that person that they can rely on who really knows this at a deep level to help them navigate the process in addition to, to families navigating the process.
Yes. Both are needed, absolutely, families and our educators. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKenna. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Kushner. Ms. Johnson?
Oh, Ms. Scott. Go ahead. Yep. Thank you. Thank you for the, the presentation and including the report as well, and I appreciate the work that, that's gone into this. And I think as that five-year plan is established, that'll also help folks be able to visualize the direction and the, the intentional changes that you're implementing. And I did just want to share, as colleagues have, have shared, to amplify the, the need for improvement for families to feel engaged, particularly those who are, who have students enrolled in programs like EBS programs. What I have heard from parents when they share their experiences is that it's difficult sometimes to volunteer. You can't really volunteer in an EBS classroom in the same way that you might volunteer in a general education classroom. And I think it is the, the Welcome to Holland, you know, the, the story. Well, and for, for special education, I think for, for some families, that's, that's a challenge. They have this idea in their head of what school's going to be like as, as a, as a parent, and then that's not exactly their experience. So, I think anything we can do to help, and this is totally separate, and just tossing this out there, though, if PTAs can also make sure that they're trying to engage at the school level, families, just to make sure this, our families do feel that they have a home in that school community. And then I know this also doesn't have really anything to do with this, but hearing the need for more special education teachers. I would love to see if the future teacher program could maybe even have a specific part to recruit future special education teachers. I think I mentioned this to you before, Superintendent Moore, like students who volunteer with the PEPI program at high schools might be, might consider a future in special education. They already volunteer with students who have special needs and, and enjoy that, and that's certainly a calling. So, I would just love to see if that's something we could do with that as we try to support our, our special education teachers. It's challenging to recruit teachers right now, but it is an amazing profession. So, hopefully that will, that could happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Johnson-Hussler?
That's a great idea, Ms. Scott, considering of a daughter who loves PEPI, and she also coaches their Spec Ed cheer squad. So, that's a really good point. I'd not even, I've not made the connection with my own child. So, it's a, clearly she has a calling for it. She's taken on multiple. But that's, that's actually a great idea because we know the difficulty of record, of recruiting teachers, but certainly our Spec Ed teachers, though. Thank you, Ms. Scott. I'm going to go home and recruit personally.
I can support that.
At least, you can. You know. At least explore the idea. I echo my colleagues' most of, almost everything that's been said. One of the things I will lift up that has already been said is my concern about the number of people who responded. It's probably, for me, it's probably the largest number of calls and emails I get as a board member are about Spec Ed. And so, the numbers, you know, cause me a little bit of pause because I'm like, I probably have more emails than this from families. And so, but again, we, we know getting families to engage in our surveys are difficult for lots of reasons. But I would also say this is also a space for us to create some trust around. We really are asking because we really want to do something different, and I think this presentation is a great first step to show people we didn't just ask questions to be asking, but that there is really a concerted effort and a plan to address the gaps that have been identified. And so, certainly I will say for me as a board member, it's something I can lift up to families who do reach out by just, at the very least, sharing this. So, thank you for doing it and an acknowledgement of that. It's still probably significant gaps of families and communities we haven't heard from. The, the other thing that I would say for me around the, well, two things. When you talk about the stakeholder document, I'm assuming you also mean for families as well in kind of streamlining this document that, so I'm assuming parents are also one of your stakeholders when you talk about this document. Pam shaking her head, yes?
Yes, yes. I think you're referring to the, the program description document?
Yes.
Yes. And it, it is a document that we make available on our website every year, and Ms. Doak's team takes the lead in really reexamining that every year. And we've seen, we've seen where there are some, some gaps and have already made some adjustments. I don't, do you want to talk at all about that?
You're exactly right. Thanks for asking that question. And the fact that we, you know, you make an assumption that you develop a document and people understand it. And it was great feedback to have in regards to that. So, we have looked at it at this point. As we are getting ready to start allotments, which is hard for me to say, but that's what we're going to be doing very soon, right? So, we will be looking at that again. And our, our CIC group will be very instrumental in reviewing that with us. Their parents, they're going to help us, you know, go through that and, and get that information as we're ready to do that. Probably it will be early spring when we go back to get that done, you know? And one thing that I wanted to add about the pre-K transition, we currently have a group that does that in regards to working with them. So, we are, that, part of that program description is very critical to that group. So, we're, we're also getting feedback from them, you know? So, there's the connections we're starting to make to make sure our parents have the information that really is understandable to them. And if it's not, then we need to continue to revise that.
But that's certainly for me, good to hear. And this, this won't be popular, but I've already said this to, to our chair. I really think that there, so we all know there's a lot of people and organizations that families pay to help them navigate our system. I think those are stakeholders we should be talking to because they know the number-one questions that they're being asked or the gaps that parents feel when they're looking at our website or even when they're, when we internally to WCPSS are trying to talk them through what happens. Like, you know, the example I used was, parents don't know that they could be asking us for OT or PT or that, again, I'll use my daughter's example. When she lost her hearing, her second-grade teacher was the first person to recognize it. We did all these outside tests, and at the end of the day, her pediatrician said, "Why don't you just ask the school for OT?" And I was like, "Well, I didn't know that I could." So, that's a personal example of not knowing who I can pretty much read and understand, but clearly still miss major gaps that caused my daughter very difficult, a significant amount of difficulty reading and processing early because of a hearing loss that we just weren't ever able to catch. And so, it impacted her reading, as you can imagine, all through elementary, probably still today, honestly. So, those are things for me that I think that the folks, that parents who have the privilege to pay these people have access to that information where all of our families don't. So, those for me are things I'd like to see in a document so parents can say, "Oh, well, here's a little..." And none of these lines are straight, right? So, I think that I own that's probably some of the complication of how do you make this really user-friendly? Because there are no straight lines to what you can or should or what might be helpful to your child. Because some of, like, that was not intuitive to me to even think about processing.
So, one of, one of the things that we have started doing is we, we do have some, some advocates who partner really well with us and, and really want their goal to be for the school system to improve. And so, we have started having individual meetings with several of them to hear what, what are you hearing the issues are that we might not be hearing the issues are. And we're taking that information to also look at what additional supports or resources do we need to put in place so that, so that families have access to the information?
Perfect. So, I'm going to guess you might have a similar answer to my second one.
I hope so.
Well, Ms. Kushner, Ms. Kushner also touched on this one, too. I also found those meetings extremely helpful because I didn't understand, again, clearly, as I stated, when I came on the board, I didn't understand the scope of what we offered at all. So, those meetings were extremely helpful for me as a new board member to be able to say, "Oh, well, actually, we have this inside of our district, so there are resources for you." And so, you, you mentioned that you have, it sounds like alternative months of how you're meeting, but I would also say, because we are going to have new board members, that this is a place that I think is really helpful for people to have access to information about what is happening in the district. But also, most of those people sitting at those tables, whether they're organizations or individuals, they're also our constituents. So, it's also for us a place to hear how these conversations are happening so that we're better liaisons to you all back to our community. Because currently, if you're me, you just email you all and say, "I don't know the answer to this." But I do think it would be helpful, just very precursor, like, "Hey, if you got a question about this, call Pam. If you have a question about this." I think just, I, that was helpful to me in the beginning. And I'm thinking about our new board coming up, that, that those things might be useful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank you for these findings. I think even though they seem broad, they're certainly focused in on the areas of concern that we hear from families. And I was, my ears really perked up with recommendation number three, not just the teacher training opportunities for, you know, our CA or regional program teachers, but for those general ed teachers who have kids with IEPs so we can expand their knowledge and their ability to support. And I, I particularly thank you for highlighting our instructional insistence in this because they really are a part, a big part of that team. And I'm sure Ms. Carter can tell us many, many stories on, on how big a role they play. So, thank you for highlighting that, and we appreciate the work that you all put into this. And we look forward to diving deeper into this as we move forward. So, thank you all. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Up next is the final draft of our Wake County Schools, Public School System Enrollment Plan for 2023-2024. This piece will be presented by our Assistant Superintendent of School Choice Planning and Assignment, Glenn Croza, and our Senior Director of Student Assignment, Susan Pulliam. This is a large document to load. So, if you are pulling it up in the board materials, it may take a moment. Otherwise, follow along on the live stream, and you will see it there. And this will be a, what I can only imagine, a very thorough summary of what, what we're going to hear. And for folks that are listening, this will be voted on tonight by the board as part of our action agenda. So, thank you, Ms. Pulliam and Mr. Croza, when you are ready.
Chair Mahaffey, Vice Chair Hagerty, Superintendent Moore, and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to present the final draft of the 2023-2024. Board. Thank you for this opportunity to present the final draft of the 2023-2024 Enrollment Plan. Staff is here today to share the final draft of the 23-24 Enrollment Plan. Our goal for today's meeting, as mentioned earlier, is to share updates from our recent public engagement activities, as well as to review the final set of recommendations included in the proposed enrollment plan. Additionally, as obviously was previously mentioned, we are seeking approval later tonight at your board meeting. On Slide 3, we always like to take this opportunity to remind ourselves of the guiding policy that directs our student assignment process, and that is Board Policy 4150, specifically referring to the four pillars that should be paid attention to when drawing school assignment areas. And those are student achievement, stability, proximity, and operational efficiency. And while student achievement is always first and foremost in our minds, we certainly recognize that no one pillar truly supersedes any of the others and that we have to work in concert to try to find a balance between the four as best we can when making assignment recommendations. Moving to Slide 4, we just want to give you a quick overview of what we'll talk about today. We'll start with some updates specific to the public engagement for the Draft 2 release. So we did have some specific activities that we engaged our community in that we want to give you some updates on. We'll also do a comprehensive public engagement summary for all of the activities for the entire enrollment planning process. We'll take a moment to review our CAP schools and our capital improvement plan, and then we'll do a thorough, hopefully quick, review of all of the recommendations that are included in the final draft. So let's first begin with a few updates. As you'll recall, when we presented Draft 2 in October at one of your work sessions, we mentioned that we would open a new thought exchange, as well as host an additional virtual public information session because there were a few changes in Draft 2. So we'll start with the thought exchange. On Page 7, you'll see our overview of the thought exchange for Draft 2. So again, this is specifically the participation in the new thought exchange that was launched on October 18th. The question there was very similar to our initial question when we released Draft 1, but just kind of trying to people to sharpen their pencils toward the thoughts and questions about what was included in Draft 2. You will see that there were a total of 525 participants, which was significantly lower than the original draft. But again, this is that second go round. We had 449 individual thoughts posted, 7,442 ratings. So we still maintained an average rating ratio of around 17 ratings per thought, which is a very good ratio for, for this level of participation. You'll see that 93% of the participants identified as parent or guardian. The remainder chose either student, community member, or staff. And as a reminder, someone could identify more than one role. So those numbers will not add up to 100. And similar to the participation in Draft 1, you see a distribution based on self-identification of the area of the county that the person participating indicated they resided in, with the, the largest proportion being in the southern, southeastern, southwestern, and western areas, which is logical because some of the significant recommendations are in those four areas. On Slide 8, similar to what we shared with you at the end of Draft 1, we wanted to give you an idea of the quantity of thoughts by theme or topic as compared to the star ratings. If you'll notice, diversity actually did come up as a thought that had a significant number of ratings in our first draft. In this draft, the comments really focused on stability. That's the largest column on the far left, close to 210 total comments. That included thoughts or words or terms related to the concept of stability. Proximity had around 90 total comments. The third bar in, in the darkest green, is calendar change. So specifically talking about the fact that the assignment recommendation might be changing the calendar of my base school. Then transportation concerns different from proximity, really clearly specifically talking about maybe wanting transportation with a stability transfer or needing transportation to a school assignment. And then efficiency still did come up again for us in this particular round of the thought exchange. Looking at Slide 9, you then see how those shift a little bit when we start applying the star rating category. So regardless of how many thoughts were posted, the ratings were such that efficiency, proximity, and stability all came out with about a 4.2, 4.3 star rating. So still a lot of energy and affirming support around the comments in these three categories. And then transportation and calendar change not far behind. All of the thoughts this go around had an average rating of four point or higher. We, the gap then fell much below that 3.5 threshold that we have. So lots of positive and affirming energy for concepts related to efficiency, proximity, stability, transportation, and calendar change. On Slide 10, which should not be a surprise, we did take the moment again just to share, if a specific school was mentioned or a specific region was mentioned, we categorized the thoughts based on the quantity that came in for those particular areas or those schools. So our Apex High School, Apex Friendship High School, Cary High School, Green Hope High School. So that was that one significant set of recommendations in the west and southwest. We had around 160 total thoughts that talked specifically about those particular moves. And then the southeastern and southern area came in with a little over 45-ish total comments. I do need to make an edit for that third bar in. It says southeast Raleigh, eastern, and northern. It should actually say southeast Raleigh, eastern, and northeastern. That was a bit of a typo, and we will make a correction when we do a final posting. Then you'll see central and northern came in on that, that fourth location with southwest, western, not including the high schools. So that would be specifically any elementary or middle school recommendations in that area came in as the fifth highest quantity of thoughts. More importantly, what did we hear? So you saw the basic distribution of the participation and the basic distribution of types and themes and topics. What we heard this go around, from the thought exchange specifically, was that there's continued support for the recommended stability rules, particularly emphasizing the rising kindergarten, sixth and ninth grade add-on to those stability rules. There are, there's continued support for the recommendations that allow families to go to a school that's more proximate to their home. The next two, where it says understanding of, there's still a continued understanding in the community of challenges related to both population growth and district transportation. But we do take the note to say, there's not always agreement on how to address both of those challenges. There was a lot of suggestions to postpone changes in school assignment until the opening of new schools. There was, we noticed last time there were concerns about stability transfers not having district transportation. This time, there were specific suggestions that the stability transfers come with district transportation. This time around, while we heard it a little bit in the last thought exchange, this thought exchange, it really popped up as a more prevalent theme, that there were concerns about the impact of changing schools on students' mental health. And then there were also additional concerns related to recommendations that change a base assignment from a traditional calendar school to a multi-track year-round school. So just very clear distinctions, a lot of common themes from Draft 1, but a few additional things that popped up here specific to Draft 2. As we did last time, we want to share with you a few of the updates to the frequently asked questions. There were a lot of questions that came in through this draft, this draft's thought exchange that were slightly different from some of the questions that came up through the first thought exchange. And so we wanted to address those. One question that came up was that, hey, why do you think that we all want to have K-8 multi-track year-round calendar feeder? You know, we've got, just because we have a year-round at the elementary level, why do you presume that we want to have that at the middle school? And so we simply responded to that question by saying, for long-range planning purposes, we do assume that families will want to continue on the same calendar from elementary to middle. However, we also acknowledge that if parents would like to request a different calendar, there are several application processes they can use to do that. The one that's open right now is the magnet and year-round calendar application process. And then later on, when our transfer window opens up in the spring, they can ask for traditional calendar that way. We also like to recognize that many of our magnet schools are also on a traditional calendar. So that's another way to potentially ask for a traditional calendar school as well. On Slide 14, we had a follow-up question to several of the questions that we had related to the assignments recommended to Apex High School and Apex Friendship High School, or impacting those two schools. And it was, well, if you're going to reassign us now, will we also then again be reassigned when Felton Grove opens up? And the short answer to that question is no. The recommendations that are being made in this plan are considered essentially Phase 1 of preparing for the opening of Felton Grove. And so additional recommendations would most likely impact those areas that are south of US-1 once Felton Grove opens up. Slide 15, we actually did not get very many people asking this question, but we thought it was a very powerful question that definitely needed some airtime. And that's quite simply, I already have a magnet seat, or I'm already on transfer somewhere. Am I impacted if my base changes? Again, the short answer is no. If you already have magnet status, or you already have transfer status somewhere, those will hold tight for you. You certainly can ask for something different during one of our application processes, but you would not be impacted by a base assignment change or a calendar application change. And then on Page 16, we did notice this. If you'll recall, I mentioned at the presentation in October that we would specifically send a directed email to all families that were potentially impacted by the draft. We saw a very high uptick in questions and comments related to the calendar application schools as a result of that. So we thought that was a, a smart thing that we did to make sure families were recognizing that it's not just some base assignment recommendations that were being included. And so we did start to get questions about, what does that mean for us? And so what that means is that we are recommending reducing calendar application choices for some addresses. As a result, families may still be able to request those, you know, opposite calendar schools, but they may no longer be able to have district transportation with those, those options. And so those were the key questions. There were a handful more. If anybody would like to, they can go to our enrollment proposal website. There were a few additional FAQs that are, that are posted there. And that site will remain open, I think, through today. On Page 17, I'd like to now take a moment and just give you a quick overview of all of the public engagement responses and what we heard. What did we hear throughout this entire process? So starting on Page 18, a quick reminder of all the activities we participated in. I won't read through all of them, but just a reminder, we started all the way back in June with an open-ended question about schools and what are good factors for a school to be a good fit for your family. We also did some follow-on focus groups based on what we learned from that particular thought exchange, used that information as well as other information we had from previous enrollment plans, conversations throughout the district to present for you the first draft. Once the first draft was released, we had two different types of public engagement activities. We had the thought exchange that remained open for a three-week period. And then we held those four separate regional public information sessions. Followed a similar pattern here for the second draft. And then, of course, you had your public hearing last week on November 10th. On Page 19, you'll see a quick summary of the total participation in all of these activities. The thought exchange represents the highest rate of, or total count of participants, a total of 5,587 participants across the three thought exchanges and the five public information sessions. And that does not include your public hearing from last week. In addition, you'll see that there were 629 individual views of the recordings from the virtual public information sessions as of noon on November 9th. And that continues to grow on a daily basis. So just to break it down, the, the sum total of thought exchange participants was a little over 5,000, 5,445. And the sum total of live participants in the virtual public information sessions was 142. Moving forward, once you get to the point where you've approved a final plan, we will then eventually close down the proposal site because it will no longer be a proposal. And then families will simply just go to our traditional enrollment site to find the address lookup tool, to find any information about application processes. So we wanted to make sure we shared that website link with everyone so they'd know where to go to look for new information. Couple of final updates before we start reviewing the individual recommendations. Again, on Slide 22, you'll see a listing of the CAP schools, current CAP schools. As a reminder, we usually come to you in the early spring, February, March time period to discuss if any of these should remain or can be removed. And the reason for that is to allow the assignment plan and any stability transfers to be processed before making any final recommendations related to those CAPs. That's why they're slightly staggered. And then on Slide 23, a reminder of what's included in the capital improvement plan relating to new schools. And so I do want to note that we do have a handful of renovations that are also ongoing during the same time period, which we could potentially gain new capacity from as well. And so we will take advantage of that as we can as those schools come online. Of course, we always want to note that due to market volatility, pop project schedules can always be adjusted. But at this time, this is what we're planning for. And then from Draft 2, we did add in this additional map related to those new schools just to help people visualize where they're located throughout the district. So we present now our final enrollment plan recommendations for the 2023-24 school year. These recommendations take into account not only the input and feedback from stakeholders, but our guidance from Board Policy 4150, our need to address overcrowded schools, and our need to support transportation efficiency. First, we'll take a look at an overview of the base assignment recommendations as they impact the entire district. So starting on Slide 27, you'll see the base attendance areas that are potentially impacted at the elementary level. The list of schools on the left are the schools that are being recommended to send students to a different school, and the receiving schools are being recommended to receive these students. The colors that you see throughout the map demonstrate the distribution of those recommendations throughout the county. On Slide 28, you see a similar map at the middle school level. I do want to point out, we will be adding one final new recommendation in this draft related to Salem Middle and Carnage Middle. We'll discuss that when we get to the central region. And just wanted to let you know that that's been included. So there's a slight update to this one from the last time you saw this map. And then on Slide 29, this is the same map that we presented to you during Draft 2, which includes the high schools that are being projected to be impacted by base assignment changes. We originally broke this down into several regions. So we'll start by looking at the southeast Raleigh, eastern, and northeastern area. Since it's been a while since we've looked at these, I'll take a moment to kind of orient you to how the maps are set up. The map on the left recommends the current base attendance areas for the schools that we'll be reviewing. The hashed out areas with the sort of highlighted red circle indicate what we're recommending reassigning. And then the map on the right would show you the resultant map if approved as recommended. So for this particular area, we have Walnut Creek. The yellow line that's sort of on the north edge of the Walnut Creek base attendance area represents 440 and I-40, where they are on that, that side of the loop. And then the yellow line kind of coming down and bisecting the Walnut Creek is where I-40 starts to head a little bit south and east. The yellow area represents the Walnut Creek Elementary Base Attendance Area today, and the pink represents the Barwell Road Elementary School Base Attendance Area today. We're recommending taking the portion highlighted and assigning it from Barwell to Walnut Creek. As a reminder, this is the, the general location of the Old Town subdivision, mostly undeveloped. There are some students coming into the apartment complex that has been constructed, and the townhomes are starting to populate every day. And so then the third largest phase has not yet begun. So the recommendation here is being made to reduce crowding at Barwell Road Elementary, to better utilize the capacity at Walnut Creek Elementary, as well as preparing for that future development in the Old Town area. On Slide 32, again, just to orient you to these, since it's been a little bit, since we've looked at some of these, the top table would show you if we did nothing, what the projected enrollment from a percent, crowding perspective would look like if we made no changes, based on data that was available to us earlier in the fall. And the proposed 2023-24 table that's on the, the lower end of the slide would show you that if these were approved as recommended, what would the projected crowding be. And as you can tell, it's not a significant impact in the first couple of years because this is largely undeveloped land. So we do need to continue to monitor Barwell Road over time because it is continuing to experience crowding even with this recommendation. On Slide 33, you have one of our multifaceted recommendations. And so this is a series of recommendations to add to the attendance area of Southeast Raleigh High School. The portion that's sort of in the middle, in the light blue area, the light blue attendance area represents a portion of the Broughton High School Base Attendance Area. The bright pink represents a portion of the Enlow High School Base Attendance Area. The darker green color represents the current Southeast Raleigh High School Base Attendance Area. The yellow represents a portion of Garner High School's Base Attendance Area. And the darker blue represents a portion of South Garner High School's Base Attendance Area. So the recommendation complementary to what we're recommending for Walnut Creek is to take the Old Town subdivision area and assign it to Southeast Raleigh High School as well. And so that's the portion that you'll see on the eastern side of the recommended map. And then the portion that's more centrally located, that represents a portion of the Broughton and Enlow High School Base Attendance Area, is the current base attendance area for Southeast Raleigh Elementary School. And so this would align that feeder pattern for that campus to Southeast Raleigh Elementary, Centennial Middle, Southeast Raleigh High School, which was part of the original intent when the school was open, that that would be the, the feeder pattern for those students. And the wraparound services would continue with them onto the Southeast Raleigh High School campus. So again, these recommendations are being made to align the feeder pattern for Southeast Raleigh Elementary into Centennial into Southeast Raleigh High School. Also to better utilize the facility at Southeast Raleigh High School, there is available capacity. And then the other recommendation is a complementary move to align the Walnut Creek feeder pattern, and again, better utilize the facility at Southeast Raleigh High School. On Slide 34, you'll see the comprehensive impact of this recommendation. And I do note that there's an additional recommendation related to Broughton High School. So this shows the sum total of both sets of moves into Broughton. And we'll see that in just a moment. Slide 35 and 36 are just zoomed-in maps of those particular recommendations, if you wanted to look at them at an individual level. Slide 37 is then the final recommendation related to Broughton High School. So you'll see that there's an attendance area highlighted in the central area that's a portion of the Sanderson Base currently. The current assignment for that area is Root Elementary, Moore Square Middle, Sanderson High School. So with this potential relief at Broughton and based on proximity and transportation efficiency, as well as to align that feeder pattern for those schools, we are recommending that this particular- that this particular area be assigned to Broughton High School from Sanderson. So again, that's for transportation efficiency as well as for feeder pattern. And on slide thirty-eight, you see the specific impact of Sanderson, and again, it's that same cumulative impact on Broughton for both sets of moves. On slide thirty-nine, we start to get into the eastern area, and so what you're seeing in pink is the area for Beaver Dam Elementary School. The green represents the current attendance area for Forest Full Road Elementary School. The yellow line that's bisecting those two attendance areas is a portion of 540, just to orient you on your map. And then the dark black line that's sort of at the base of Beaver Dam, that's represents Business 64, so it kind of gives you a position within the county of where we're located. The recommendation is to take a portion of the existing Beaver Dam Base Attendance Area that is east of 540 and is largely undeveloped land. Some of you may be familiar with the old Wilmar Golf Club or golf course. It's being developed into a subdivision, and this represents a big portion of that. There is an existing neighborhood in the northern portion of this along Forest Full Road, so we are recommending assigning that to Forest Full Road as well as picking up this undeveloped land in advance. As a reminder, Beaver Dam is currently capped, and so this recommendation is being made not only to relieve crowding, but potentially get us in a position where we might be able to take the cap off, and then as well as to better utilize the facility at Forest Full Road Elementary. On slide forty, you can see how this does much better balance the enrollment projections for both schools across both campuses. Slide forty-one is again what I would consider a complimentary move, so recommending that since we're moving the elementary schools for this particular set of addresses, that we also look to align the feeder pattern at the middle school level as well. And so we're recommending taking that same general area and assigning it from Riverbend, which is represented in green, to Noose River Middle, which is represented in pink. And I would like to draw your attention to the fact that Noose River Middle School's physical location is quite literally on the line of this area that we're recommending assigning to the school. And we've been talking with the town, and there's actually plans to develop a greenway and things like that to access some of the new subdivisions and getting to and from the school. So this is being recommended to align the feeder pattern from Forest Full Road onto Noose River Middle, as well as to better balance facility utilization between the two schools in this high-growth area so that there's room in both schools over time to continue to absorb the new growth that's coming. Staying in the east but coming a little bit further south, we're looking at yellow representing Hodge Road Elementary's Base Attendance Area, and we are on slide forty-three. The blue represents Nightdale Elementary, not Nightdale Elementary's Base Attendance Area. For orientation, the yellow line that bisects the two is 540, and then the yellow line that is sort of bounding the southern edge of Nightdale Elementary and kind of cutting through Hodge, that represents Interstate 87. Hodge Road is currently experiencing significant crowding, and so in an effort to address that crowding, potentially avoid a cap, we're recommending taking the attendance area highlighted that will eventually be east of future 540, once it continues on down that area, and assigning it to Nightdale Elementary School. So this is really to utilize the facility at Nightdale Elementary as well as to relieve crowding at Hodge Road Elementary. On slide forty-four, you can see the impact there where we do balance the enrollments a little bit better between the two campuses, and it does take some pressure off of Hodge Road over time. As a reminder, Hodge Road is one of our magnet programs as well, so we want to make sure that there continues to be sufficient space to support that program. Pages forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty are all one related move. It's a complete feeder pattern alignment move. So starting here on page forty-five, we have a recommendation to take an area that is actively being constructed but is still under development from Heritage Elementary and assigning it to Wake Forest Elementary, and this is to better utilize the facility at Wake Forest Elementary and get it in advance of any students, you know, moving into the new subdivision. So to orient you, the darker black line on the left side of your map is Capitol Boulevard. The second one to the right that's a little bit lighter is US-1, and so that just kind of gives you an orientation of where you are in the Wake Forest Heritage area. And so here, we're making this recommendation to better utilize the facility at Wake Forest Elementary prior to the subdivision coming online. And so page forty-six, you see the projected impact on enrollment. Forty-seven then is just continuing with the feeder pattern and aligning them from Heritage Middle School to Wake Forest Middle School, to align the feeder pattern as well as to balance some of the enrollment between the two campuses. The Heritage Base Attendance Area is projected to continue to grow in the coming years, so we're trying to get ahead of that growth. And then on page forty-nine, the similar move at the high school level. We did add this in draft two based on parent feedback and just continued to keep it here for the final draft. This also will relieve future pressure on Heritage, which is another one of our CAP schools in the district. And so those are the moves in the southeast Raleigh, eastern, and northeastern areas. Next, we'll take a look at the central and northern areas of the county. On page fifty-two, we're showing you a recommendation to take a portion of the Farmington Woods Elementary Base Attendance Area and assign it to Washington Elementary. So the dark teal kind of green color represents the Farmington Woods current base attendance area, and the pink color represents Washington. If you go to slide fifty-three, you'll see a zoomed-in version, a little bit easier to look at. And this recommendation is being made largely based on proximity and transportation efficiency. We are mindful that Washington Elementary is set for renovation soon, so we want to be cautious not to add too many students until the renovation is complete. Once the renovation is complete and we have a full understanding of what the capacity will look like, we may come back with additional recommendations to take advantage of those extra seats. On slide fifty-five, we see a similar recommendation where the light green represents Laurel Park Elementary's current base attendance area, and the pink represents Fuller Elementary's current base attendance area. Again, if you'll go to slide fifty-six, you can see that zoomed in a little bit better. And so what you're seeing here is a recommendation that's being made not only based on proximity and transportation efficiency, but with the newly renovated campus at Fuller, there's sufficient capacity to add the students at the campus. And with the changing dynamics of the community in the area, it's a positive move from a student achievement perspective as well. Looking at slide fifty-eight, if you'll recall during the draft two presentation, we were asked, I believe it was by Ms. Kushner, if we had double-checked and made sure that all of our middle school feeder patterns for these downtown area recommendations had been checked, and we did miss one. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. When we looked through the details of this, this is that same area. It's currently assigned to Salem Middle School, so it's Laurel Park Salem Middle School. So we're recommending also changing the assignment at the middle school level. We have reached out to the families impacted to receive their feedback on this prior to bringing it to you because we knew this was a late add, and so we wanted to make sure we did that ahead of time. And so this represents that addition that I showed you on the base coverage map earlier in the presentation. So this will be to align the feeder pattern such that the students would be assigned to Fuller Elementary and Carnage Middle. Obviously, it's being made based for proximity and transportation efficiency as well as to align the K-8 calendar. If this was not to go through, then we would have a traditional elementary multi-track year-round middle and then come back for high school. Looking at page fifty-nine, you can then see the potential impact here, and with Salem Middle School being in a relatively high-growth area, we feel confident we can use that capacity out there. On slide sixty, we have another recommendation related to the central area. The blue represents the existing attendance area for Olds Elementary. The purple is Hunter Elementary. And again, as the last few we had on page sixty-one, you have a zoomed-in version of that map. Just to orient you, the sort of northern portion of that new attendance area is East Davy Street. Lenore is sort of that southern boundary, and then Southeast Street is the western edge of that new area. This was being recommended to reduce crowding at Olds Elementary, as well as to better utilize capacity at Hunter. Again, doing to, due to some changing dynamics in the central area, there's new capacity available at Hunter, as well as for transportation efficiency in proximity. If you look on page sixty-two, you can see the impact. We're still concerned, and we want to make sure we're keeping an eye on Olds, but at a school that has a capacity as small as it does, any additional students create a very, you know, large percent change in capacity. So at this point, we will continue to monitor Olds. We're very excited that they're gaining favor. Their kindergarten cohort has really grown, so we're going to continue to monitor the school. On page sixty-three, similar to the recommendations at Southeast Raleigh High School, this is sort of a map of combined recommendations that are related to bringing students to both Bug Elementary and Wiley Elementary. So to orient, the light green area or sort of lime-green area represents a portion of the Wiley Elementary Base, just for, to confirm, that's not where Wiley Elementary is located. It's an internal satellite attendance area for Wiley. The dark pink area on the northern edge of the left-sided map is part of the Oak Grove Elementary Base Attendance Area. The lighter pink area on the southern edge of that map on the left is the current Bug Base Attendance Area, and you can actually see the location of Bug Elementary School in the middle of that section. And then the sort of hashed-out area that's in the larger circle, kind of in the lower middle of the map, represents a portion or a satellite portion of the Northridge Elementary School Base Attendance Area. So based on available capacity at both Wiley and Bug Elementary, based on transportation efficiency, and crowding at Northridge Elementary in particular, we're recommending that portions of these attendance areas be assigned from Oak Grove to Wiley, and a little piece be assigned from Northridge Elementary to Wiley based on transportation efficiency, and then that larger portion of Northridge Base Attendance Area be assigned to Bug. We're pretty confident that the Bug piece might actually be within a walk zone. We're continuing to work with our transportation department and city officials to make sure that it is safe to walk, but certainly it'll be much closer to home. So again, just to summarize, these recommendations are being made to reduce crowding at Northridge Elementary, to better utilize the available capacity at Bug and Wiley, as well as for transportation efficiency. On slide sixty-four, you can see the combined set of projected enrollment changes based on this complimentary set of changes. On slide sixty-five, you'll see the complimentary recommendations for this same area at the middle school level. And so the pink area represents a portion of Oberlin's attendance area, Oberlin Middle School's attendance area. The sort of yellowish-mustard-type color represents a portion of Dillard Middle School's Base Attendance Area, and the green represents a portion of the Ligon Middle School Base Attendance Area. And then, of course, that hashed-out region that was aligned with Northridge Elementary, that represents a portion of West Millbrook's Base Attendance Area. So to align the feeder patterns as well as take advantage of available capacity and for transportation efficiency purposes, we're recommending aligning those that will be going to Wiley to Oberlin, and then those areas that'll be going to Bug to Ligon. And slide sixty-six then shows you the potential impact on crowding across all four campuses. And West Millbrook is in a newly renovated campus and is one of our magnet programs, so we feel confident we can take advantage of those seats. Next, we'll take a look at the southeastern and southern area recommendations. So looking at slide sixty-eight, we have the first recommendation in this area. This is at the elementary level. We're making a recommendation based on crowding and continued growth at Bryan Road Elementary, as well as available capacity at Aversboro Elementary, to take two portions of the Bryan Road Elementary Base Attendance Area and assign them from Bryan Road to Aversboro Elementary. The purple represents the Aversboro Base Attendance Area, and that sort of salmon color represents the Bryan Road. We do acknowledge that there's a portion in the south, that sort of southern half of the map or third of the map that we're kind of splitting across the Aversboro Base Attendance Area. As a reminder, just east of that will be the future location of Hilltop Needmore Elementary, and a little bit farther east is a future location for Bowling Road Elementary. So we're confident that that area will most likely be impacted when one or both of those schools open. So we wanted to avoid reassigning multiple times in a short period of time. This recommendation again is being made to reduce crowding at Bryan Road Elementary and to better utilize the facility at Aversboro Elementary, and we feel this can be a long-term assignment to Aversboro over time. Page sixty-nine shows you the impact on projected crowding based on those recommendations, which does allow us to get to that 25, 26 school year. As you'll remember, that's when the majority of our schools in the current CIP are projected to open. On page seventy, you'll see a recommendation related to South Lakes Elementary. There's significant crowding and continued growth. It's one of the fastest-growing areas in the district, this particular base attendance area. So the green represents South Lakes Elementary. The sort of purply-magenta color represents Fuquay Varina Elementary. And so we're recommending taking two portions of the South Lake Elementary Base Attendance Area and assigning them from South Lakes to Fuquay Varina Elementary. We do acknowledge that with South Lakes being a relatively new school, these families were probably impacted by an assignment about three years ago, so this is just at that edge, and while it's not what we intend to do, it's needed. The school is bursting at the seams. So this recommendation is being made to reduce crowding at South Lakes Elementary, potentially avoiding a cap over time, and to better utilize the facility at Fuquay Varina Elementary. Again, for positioning, I mentioned earlier, Bowling Road Elementary in the southern portion of the South Lakes Attendance Area budding up just against, I think that's South Main Street, is the future location for Bowling Road, and so we certainly know that that lower portion of the South Lakes Attendance Area will be impacted by the opening of that Slide seventy-one then shows you the potential impact on both schools. I do want to make a note, there's an additional recommendation related to relieving the crowding at South Lakes, and so this incorporates the total complement of those two moves, so we'll go ahead and look at that one next. On slide seventy-two, we have a second recommendation related to South Lakes Elementary, and that's to take an attendance area that's on the northern portion of its attendance area that's along NC-42, and to assign it to Willow Springs Elementary. Again, to reduce crowding at South Lakes and to take advantage of some available capacity at Willow Springs Elementary. And so you'll see the overall projected impact on South Lakes on this slide, as well as the individual impact on Willow Springs. Moving on to slide seventy-four, we're now looking at a middle school recommendation. As you may be aware, Fuquay Varina Middle School is in that same sort of area of South Lakes, and so it's experiencing a rapid rate of growth. Its crowding is, it's a lot. There's a lot of students at the school right now, and so we're trying to come up with a recommendation that will be a long-term recommendation. And so what we've discovered is that this attendance area that's highlighted in the circle, this portion is also the Willow Springs Elementary School Base Attendance Area, which is a multi-track year-round elementary school. And with Herbert Akins now getting ready to go into its second year of operations, there's sufficient capacity at the school to absorb the students from this base attendance area. We do recognize that it's not the closest middle school to the attendance area, but it is the closest school with available capacity and allows for a K-8 calendar alignment. So we are making this recommendation based on overcrowding at Fuquay Varina Middle and to better utilize the facility at Herbert Akins Road, as well as, as I mentioned, to align that K-8 calendar feeder pattern. Just as a note, there were some concerns that perhaps this area would be isolated when it comes back to Willow Springs High School, but there are other schools that are at Herbert Akins. There are some students that go from Banks to Herbert Akins Road Middle, as well as from Ballantyne to Herbert Akins Road Middle, that also come back to Willow Springs High School. So we feel confident there'll be a significant cohort coming back to Willow Springs High School from that, if the assignment recommendation gets approved. And on slide seventy-five, you can see what those projections are looking like for both Fuquay Varina Middle and Herbert Akins. We also do recognize that when Fuquay Varina Middle's new campus is completely, is completed, they're projected to move in sometime next school.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Twenty-five is the current projection, that there'll be some additional capacity, however, with the growth in that portion of the county and to the west of the future location of Fuquay Varina Middle, we won't be coming back to the east to fill the school. We'll be pushing to the west to fill the school. So again, to allay the fears, this would be a long-term recommendation. We wouldn't be coming back with a reassignment later. Then moving into the southwestern area and western area of the county, we do have a handful of recommendations here. The first one is at the elementary level, a recommendation to relieve crowding at Dillard Drive Elementary, as well as to take advantage of some proximity at Adams Elementary and available capacity at Adams Elementary. So we're recommending the, the blue portion represents the Dillard Drive Base, the sort of brown-tanish color represents the Adams Elementary Base, so we just want to expand that Adams Elementary Base to cover that portion that's north of the US-164 area. It's very, very close to us here. It's that area between South Hills and the new Epic Facility, Epic Games Facility, so that it is a significant number of students. However, we'll talk about our stability rules if those families would like to stay, they certainly can. This is being made to reduce crowding at Dillard Drive Elementary to better utilize facility at Adams Elementary, and for a large portion of it, it would actually be a proximate or transportation efficiency recommendation as well. Looking at page seventy-eight, you can see the complete impact if all students were to take the assignment in the first year. So we do not anticipate that this would be the change for Dillard Drive in the first year of the plan, but this presumes that all students move in the first year. Looking at page seventy-nine, we mentioned when we first presented this that in a year with no new schools opening, we do have a little bit of an opportunity to take a better survey of our schools and find some satellite areas that maybe are creating some transportation inefficiencies and disconnecting cohorts and neighborhoods, and to, I find those. And so we did identify one of those here. So the recommendation that you're seeing on slide seventy-nine is to take a portion of the Combs Elementary Base that's highlighted, that's outside of I-40 or south of I-40, and is contiguous with the Swift Creek Elementary Base, and assign it from Combs to Swift Creek. So the purple represents Combs, and that lime-green color represents Swift Creek. So this will be made based on proximity for the cohort, as well as for transportation efficiency. On slide eighty, you can see that it's a negligible impact, being that it is a smaller neighborhood, smaller portion of a neighborhood. On page eighty-one, you might have noticed on that previous slide that there was also a little Swift Creek area that's on the inside of the Belt Line that's hanging out right there in that Centennial Campus area. And so the blue represents the existing Dillard Drive Elementary Base Attendance Area, and so we are recommending to just adjoin that to that existing Dillard Drive Elementary Base Attendance Area for cohort continuity, as well as for some transportation efficiency. So on slide eighty-two, the projected change So on Slide 82, the projected change in enrollment for Dillard Drive is the sum total of the earlier recommendation related to Adams, as well as this recommendation into Swift Creek. Or, sorry, out of Swift Creek. And then Slide 83 is one of our complementary recommendations, to align the middle schools for these two moves, so essentially having them realign themselves, such that the portion that is south of I-40 would align with Dillard Drive Middle School's attendance area, and that the portion that's right there on the Centennial Campus aligned with the Centennial Middle School attendance area. So this recommendation is being made to align the feeder patterns, as well as for transportation And you can see the impact on both schools on page 84. And then the last of our base assignment recommendations is at the high school level in this region, and it impacts Apex High School, Cary High School, Green Hope High School, and Apex Friendship High School. You'll see that it's a complementary set of moves that recommends taking three different areas and assigning one section from Apex Friendship into Apex High School, and two areas from Apex High School to either Green Hope or Cary High School. So what we're doing here is, if you don't know, Apex Friendship High School is one of our capped schools, and it is actively capping students. Apex High School's their overflow school, and it's also in a high-growth area, and the Felton Grove location, we did add that for visibility at our last draft, just to make sure people were aware, is just south of those two attendance areas. So knowing that that won't open for a couple of years, and that those areas south of US-1 will most likely be impacted, we wanted to find relief where there's other available capacity north of that area. Also, keep in mind that we do have a future site in Morrisville that's already under development, that'll be just north of the existing Green Hope Base attendance area, so knowing that that will potentially draw off students from the Green Hope Base, the Cary Base, and even potentially the Panther Creek Base, this is a forward-thinking phased-in approach. So here in Phase 1, we would take the portion that's most north of 64, and take it from Apex High School into Green Hope High School, as a, just for sort of information point, that's sort of a Laurel Park-Salem Elementary kind of area, and they're all going to Salem Middle, so that would make a larger cohort going from Salem Middle into Green Hope High School. The portion that's on the west, that's closer to the Cary High School Base attendance area, represents an assignment area that currently has an elementary base assignment of Briar Cliff, a middle school base assignment of East Cary Middle, and so this would complete that feeder pattern for these families. And then the purple area that represents the existing Apex Friendship Base, we are recommending an initial relief from their attendance area into Apex High School, but keep in mind, many more students are being recommended to move out than are coming in, so that over time, that would still allow for some space for the overflow students and the remainder of the Apex Friendship Base to be able to continue to use Apex High School until Felton Grove opens. Lots of dominos. So the recommendations here are being made to reduce the crowding at both Apex Friendship High School and Apex High School, to better utilize facilities at Green Hope High School and Cary High School, and to do all of this as sort of a phased-in approach in advance of the opening of Felton Grove High School. On Slide 86, you can see that this set of recommendations does ultimately balance the enrollments across these four schools a little bit better, and gets us closer to that '25-'26 opening of Felton Grove, and allows us to take some pressure off of these highly crowded schools. Page 87 just gives you a zoomed-in version of the recommendation into Cary High School. Eighty-eight gives you a recommendation, or zoomed-in version of the recommendation into Green Hope High School, and then Page 89 gives you a zoomed-in version of the recommendation from Apex Friendship to Apex High School. So those are our base recommendations. Next, we'll take a moment to look over some recommendations that we have for you related to calendar application changes. So Slides 91, 92, and 93 outline our recommendations related to calendar application options at the elementary school level. As a reminder, most of our addresses are less and less over time, but some of our addresses have an identified calendar application school that comes with district transportation, and in some cases, they might have more than one option. So if you'll look at Ballantyne Elementary, currently, families might actually see two elementary options for traditional calendar, which, as you can imagine, creates some transportation inefficiencies for us. So in this situation, we're recommending reducing that to a single choice, so that we can have efficiency going to one calendar application school. If you look at Bryan Road Elementary, it currently can see up to three different choices for year-round calendar, and so what you're seeing here is that we're saying, based on the location of where the family lives within that base attendance area, they should see either Rand or Timber, whichever is a little bit more proximate to their home, again, to improve our transportation efficiency related to these choices. You'll also notice that some of them say NA, and what that simply means is while they may no longer be able to get district transportation, families can still ask for these in our transfer window in that February-to-March time period. We're just reducing the total pressure on our transportation system by reducing the total number of schools that come with district transportation. So if you continue looking forward, we have that full slate of recommendations on 91, 92, and 93 related to the elementary schools, and then on 94, we have similar recommendations at the middle and high school level. As a reminder, with Southeast Raleigh being on a modified calendar for a period of time, we have offered a traditional calendar option, and we're recommending removing transportation to that option at this time. And Slide 95. Listening to the feedback, requesting, and prioritizing stability across all of our thought exchanges, as well as recognizing that for this plan, we have no new schools opening, we have included a recommendation for generous stability rules just for this year's enrollment plan. So we do have to acknowledge that we may not be able to offer such generous rules in future enrollment plans when new schools are impacted. So on Slide 96, we just review again that the existing students impacted by assignment changes are eligible to remain at their current assigned school with transfer status, meaning no district transportation through the terminal grade of the school, with that added generosity of allowing kindergarten, sixth, and ninth-grade siblings to join them and also stay. As a reminder, we've talked about this at the table a couple of times, the stability rules are for families that are impacted in the year that the assignment plan is approved. In future years, if I have a kindergartner coming up in a couple of years, I could use the traditional transfer process to ask for that alignment to join my family at the same school. So those options will still be available to families. This is just a special opportunity that we offer to families that are directly impacted. And just as a note, when we say eligible students, that would be students that are enrolled as of the time in which you approve the plan. So anybody who comes in after the approval of the plan would not have the same guarantee. We have noted here with some highlighted red text that we will be reaching out as soon as possible to our families to let them know exactly how to participate in this process, as well as to give them their information about the online link for the stability transfer application tool. Also, we will be opening that November 28th to December 9th. So we wanted to say that in the past, this window's not really been able to be open until about mid-December, so we're very thankful to our developer and our teams for being able to advance that schedule and get that open a little bit earlier. My goal was to try to get as many of them processed before we leave for a holiday break, so families can just feel, "Ah, it's done." So before we get to any follow-on questions or comments, I would like to take a few moments to just review our timeline. On Slide 98, you can see, we've almost done it all. We only have two things left, one of which we're doing right now, which is the presentation of our final draft, and then, of course, later tonight to bring for your final approval at the board meeting, the final plan. Slide 99, I just wanted to give you an update of how we're going to communicate and engage with families post-approval. So once the plan is approved, we will send our general messaging out to all families, "Hey, the board's approved a plan, check it out." And then we will have specific messaging, as I mentioned earlier, that'll go directly to those impacted families, to let them know how to access the online application, that they have physically been directly impacted by the change in assignment, and how to go about asking for those stability transfers. Again, highlighting, just to make sure it's obvious, we'll open that window on November 28th and have it run through December 9th. I'll talk about the footnote in just a moment. We'll also be working with our principals, we discussed this at a couple of our work sessions, to make sure they have all that they need to support families that might have questions about how to put in their stability transfers. And then just as a general reminder, we'll start sending out those assignment notifications to families beginning December 1st. Some families will get them on paper, our K-5 population will get printed copies, and then 612, if they have a parent portal, that'll be their access. If they don't have a parent portal, we'll make sure a paper copy goes home as well. I did want to note that due to printing concerns, because we'll have to start printing pretty much by the end of this week/Monday, that anybody who applies for a stability transfer, they won't see that reflected on their printed notifications, but they will in their power school or online portals. And we'll make sure there's dates on everything, so they can see that was printed on this date, and this was approved on this other date, so it overrides that previous assignment notification. And then just a sort of public service announcement on page 100, that we are currently taking our applications for both magnet year-round and early college seats at this time. Those all opened up prior to today. Soon, again, we'll open up our transfer application period for those stability transfers. Then, just as a friendly reminder to families, early college applications close a little bit earlier than the magnet, just because of the processing required in terms of evaluating all of the essays and the recommendations. So December 14th is that target date for any family that's looking to put in that early college application. You have until January 25th to modify, adjust, or put in a magnet or year-round application. And then on February 23rd, we will post the results of all three of those application processes. And then, beginning in February 24th, we'll open up our official transfer window, so that would be for any families that have specific hardship requests, or would like one of those traditional calendars, maybe, or like a calendar option that doesn't have transportation, those are the types of requests we would see at that time. I do want to say that if the stability, because the stability transfer window is open from November 28th to December 9th, families that put in their applications in that window, they're guaranteed and they're approved. If a family misses that window, we'll do everything that we can, but we have to be careful to say that the only time we can guarantee the stability transfers is during that particular window, especially for some of our schools that are highly crowded and capped. I won't walk you through all the parts of the addendum, but just to let everyone know what's in it, there's some more information related to Policy 4150. There's the detailed versions of those assignment maps that you can zoom in and see some street names and so forth, as well as, we have some additional presentations that have been linked, our Draft 2 presentation that was shared with the board, the Draft 1 with the technical corrections included, and we also, at some point, had put out some population counts and population reports. Those are still available on the website as well. And with that, I'm subject to your questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pulliam. I wrote down about six questions, and you answered four of them, so thank you for that. Board members, questions, comments at this time? Ms. Scott.
Thank you. I wanted to express my gratitude for this process. Having been through four student assignment processes since 2019, I really do feel, I see the efforts, and I hope the community sees them as well, and yes, it is challenging when it impacts your child, but the efforts that I see to help educate people on why changes are taking place, we heard you say repeatedly throughout this presentation, this is helping transportation, or this is, you know, making this more efficient, this is aligning, you know, great level, the, sorry, my brains. Yes, the alignment with the schools and keeping students together. And I mean, and that's, I just, I have to say thank you. I mean, I really feel like this has been a great process and a great presentation. You've made every effort to reach people, and so thank you so much, Ms. Pulliam. It's been great to work with you, and I greatly appreciate that, and same to Mr. Corozie, you've always been incredibly responsive, so thank you. So I feel really good about the feedback. The only, the only thing that I would, oh, I also wanted to say a huge thank you to some of the town council from Knightdale. It was Councilman McDonald who actually brought the attention of the Wilmar Golf Course, brought that to my attention, and, I mean, that type of relationships, where town leaders can reach out and share, "Hey, this is coming," and I wanted to express my gratitude for them as well, because they're obviously more plugged into what's going on within their municipalities. The only thing I would just add is when the official transfer process opens, prior to that, we've had great communication going out to our families. I don't know if that's something else you were planning on putting out in an official way as we get our, the wolf, did you ever see the Office episode, you get the fax and the email and the phone call? If that could, you know, "Hey, this period is opening."
Are you referring to the stability transfer or the general transfer?
The general transfer that opens in February.
Certainly, absolutely. We'll continue to do continuous outreach, but thank you for that recommendation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
I'm going to miss this, but I do, before I make some comments, that, they're not negative comments, I just, my last opportunity to talk about them, things about school. First, I cannot wait for the new board members to be able to answer the questions about all the windows that open up at different times, and where you fall and what category, and it's one of my favorite things. And I do appreciate the process. I think this has been a great way of going through it, the format, the explanations, the amount of times you've reached to the public and shown us how they've answered. I mean, you can't get any more transparent than that and more informative, so thank you. I mean, it's amazing for such a difficult process. So saying that, it's all positive, but I want to just leave with the current board members that are here. First, I got a question, but that's not why I'm leaving. So when you say that people that do not have a calendar application option anymore, they don't apply during the magnet process at all?
Correct. So if they don't see that as a listed option, then they'll wait until the transfer window, and then ask for a school that works for their family and meets the calendar needs for their family, and we'll use our policy on transfers to guide us as we consider and approve those.
So is that true for all people that apply for magnets and year-rounds that don't, that are not on their list?
Yes, we do have families that perhaps, as you know, there are multiple versions of the same program, let's say our GT program at the elementary level. For each address, you usually only see one, maybe two of those, that's your magnet choice, but for some reason, maybe because of your work or past history, there's a different one that you'd like to apply to, but it's not one of your magnet options for your address. Yes, you would do that during the transfer window.
Okay. So just bear with me a second, as you always have to, I know, I'm sorry. I know, I know exactly what you're thinking. However, like, when you look at the, I'm not changing anything, of course, I can't, but when you look at the Wake Forest from Heritage, and, you know, just because of the fact that a lot of the Heritage Base is right across from the Wake Forest Middle School, and the new area you're moving from the Heritage Middle School to Wake Forest is right across from Heritage Middle School, to me, this is not going to help transportation. I know, just for the future, it looks like a map that is not transportation-friendly. And so I just, I know this is an area that don't have families in it, that does not have families in it, probably, and this is why we're doing it. So it's going to look really good today, but I think in a couple of years, there's going to be a lot of conversation about how close these neighborhoods are to the schools they're leaving. Just, okay, I'm just leaving that. And I have to talk about this, but Ms. Johnson-Hassler's going to handle this one for me in the future. I'm concerned about Southeast Raleigh High School because of, even though we are giving it capacity, we're giving it areas that I'm not sure are the areas that we would want necessarily. I just want us to be, again, cognizant of this assignment plan, doing some things for schools that really need a lot of support, and Southeast Raleigh High School being one of my favorite high schools from the '90s now, is something that I hope you guys will continue to watch, but taking those neighborhoods from Broughton and Inlow into Southeast Raleigh is a concern for me. However, Ms. Johnson-Hassler is going to handle that in the future. She and I have talked about that.
Handle.
Oh, Ms. Waters is too, but...
Well, it doesn't matter, the word "handle" would be known, but we will definitely advocate.
No, advocate?
Yes.
That's the word I meant to use. Handle's a bad word. So then I do want to add one final thing, because I'm worried about transportation being the tail that wags the dog in our schools, of being healthy schools and our magnet schools. And so that's coming up over and over in here, even in the calendar options. We're losing calendar application schools for schools that need kids, from schools that might be able to let them go, but I'm sure it's a transportation issue. So, again, it's bothering me that transportation becomes the forefront. So it also brings me back to two schools in my area. Northridge Elementary, which, in all fairness, it is going to take some crowding out of Northridge, but it is an area that goes to Northridge, and I think is a diversity area that is going to be going to Bug now, and it's a transportation reason. So, as we all know, that's concerning to me, because I think, I just feel like that's... So, as we all know, that's concerning to me, because I think, I just feel like that's not what our schools, the health of our schools, Northridge was, that was a diversity area for Northridge. But I'm actually really concerned about the West Millbrook Middle School that falls into that as well. And this has come up in my district to, as a conversation. So I am going to ask you this. We are bringing a magnet school down to like 77%. And it's one of those schools that sometimes, again, we think a school, because it's doing well, can handle anything, and it's a new school, and it can't handle everything we give it, but 77% for a magnet school. Because my concern here is, where are we going to draw kids to that school? And I know, Glenn, you and I have spoken about this, because every school that it can draw from does not need to lose kids to West Millbrook. So I, I'm, I am disappointed to lose that many kids out of West Millbrook, because I feel like the application area we'll draw from will be areas, schools like the East Millbrook area, and some of the schools at Durant Road, schools that can't, that have empty seats and can't really afford to lose them either. So I, I'm concerned about that move. I won't, of course, change it, it's too late, but I am concerned that that's a school that's going to need some support, maybe with, that's a big drop, with faculty in a brand-new building trying to keep a magnet program that's fairly new as well. We don't want to take a school that's been in a certain situation for years, and we've helped it and, you know, forced it back into a situation. So I just bring that as a concern and hope that you'll monitor it.
And as history has shown us, that school is going to have a brand-new renovation, and with that, does bring additional base students back, so that's what we are banking on.
Thank you.
And staff will miss you.
Further, Ms. Kushner?
Thank you. And thanks to my colleagues for their thoughtful questions. I think the feedback from, from the high school changes has been significant, and I think it's, as that bar graph showed, and I think we, as a board, in the 10, 11 years I've been on this board, making high school moves are the most difficult, because we understand the impact that, that students and the buy-in students have on their, in their high schools. So I welcome the stability rules for this particular plan, because we've heard in the past, I just want my student to stay at the high school, they don't need transportation. So I understand for the working parents who have let us know, and the other parents, how hard it is to stay without district transportation, but really, our transportation is at a breaking point, and the capping of Apex Friendship is something we have to address. And so I appreciate that we've done, we've tried to expand those, those stability rules this year. So thanks to that, this board and to the staff for putting that in this plan. I think it's, but it's still, it's still hard. High schools are hard communities to rebuild, but I, as an optimist, I've also seen that it works, having been screamed at by parents, and then, a year later, seeing that parent be very involved in the new high school, and seeing families. You know, Green Hope is a great high school, so I hope that parents and families can embrace the changes that all of these high schools in the western part in particular are, are strong communities. But, so, thanks for, for allowing me to say all that. And thanks also for reinforcing, because there was some concern, looking at the thought exchange, that folks did not recognize how Felton Grove was in this phased-in plan, and then to add the Morrisville. So I think we do need to continue to communicate the fact that we're not coming back in two years and, and moving students who are part of this plan to Felton Grove. That's really important for us to underscore, and that's why the maps look the way they do, because we're taking that into, and I, we all wish we, Felton Grove are opening this year. We all wish that. So, but the capping is a serious pressure. So I also hope that, going forward, the staff will think about, you know, calendar changes that might be needed as a result of this plan. I think we, the data should, enrollments should hopefully drive some of that. But I also just want to lift up that Apex Friendship High School is a, such a high-demand high school, given that during our tenure, I was just pulled up the petition of hundreds and thousands of people telling us, no one would want to go to a school called Apex Friendship. And so we do listen and hear community feedback, and, and sometimes we just have to recognize that, to be more optimistic and hopeful that, that folks are going to embrace their school communities. So thank you. And thank you to all the educators who make those school communities so a high demand.
Well, Ms. Kushner, you took a lot of the words out of my mouth, so thank you. Further comments, questions from board members? All right. I had two questions. You talked about the expectation for the principals, where they have students and families who may either be applying for the stability transfer to stay, or who may be departing and impacted by this assignment plan. What is the expectation of communication for the schools who may be receiving new students once the stability transfer period has closed, so they know who's coming to their school with the assignment? So what can families who are choosing to or unable to provide transportation for their student, what should they expect from their new school community?
So what staff can do is we can provide a list of the students that'll be assigned to the new schools, and ask that they perform some sort of outreach to welcome the families to those schools.
Thank you. And then, my other question is, the Salem to Carnage, Laurel Park to Fuller move, is that included in some of the downtown high school changes, or is that a high school where they're going out to Apex High still?
They're already assigned to, I think it's Broughton, if it's not, it's Athens, but they're already assigned to a nearby high school.
So they're already assigned to a more proximate high school?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, I figured.
We did double-check that as well.
That was double-checked, but I wanted to make sure that that was a part of it. So thank you. Are there further questions?
Just to clarify, it is Broughton.
It is Broughton, okay, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from board members? This is certainly a difficult piece for our families. We know that it's not easy. We know that, you know, we've heard from families who would like feeder pattern stability rules if they, you know, stayed in their home. We've heard, I want to thank our speakers who came during public comment, and we recognize the difficulty of this for our families, and also, thank you for the thought exchange piece. I think that was really helpful and informing a lot, and appreciated everybody who shared their feedback through that. And maybe a little bit easier to be posting a little more anonymously than the Granicus that we've seen in the past. So thank you both. This is something that we will be voting on tonight during our regular meeting. And since it is 4:24, is there a motion to enter closed session? Yes?
So we didn't have questions, or we didn't have comments on the assignment?
Well, I mean, I thought I said questions or comments. I, yes. So before we do that, yeah, I couldn't tell, because it looked like you wanted to say something.
It's not me.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. All right, go ahead, Ms. Carter, my apologies.
Oh, I didn't even know that, okay. All right, I'm sorry. And so I just was wanting to echo some of what was already said, because I know I, you have been very patient, and there's been a lot of questions in my area, and the back meeting even staying later, after taking a lot of questions during the back meeting, staying afterwards, and really trying to be responsive in presenting some of those questions that were asked in our board presentations that we heard here. And I also wanted to just voice, I know it doesn't matter, this is it for me, but I appreciate the earlier version of everything. This coming sooner, because often, I know, you know, on the flip side, what it was like, I felt like I was trying to get ready for Thanksgiving, and here all the, here it came down the pipeline. Here's all this being thrown at you and trying to coordinate, being able to be actively engaged with that versus having it a little bit before, when things, there's a lot of, I'll say, school breaks that come around this time of year, and so it's, I've been appreciative as a school board member, and having gone through it as a parent, to have it earlier, the whole thing, and now especially the stability process being done and over with before a lot of our schools are closed, not closed, but, you know, for breaks, when a break coming up, and, well, yeah, they are, you know, folks are going off for several weeks, so it is helpful, I think, to have that, so that families and folks can kind of know, going into that, what they have and what to plan for. So I appreciate all of that.
And staff would like to thank the board for your engagement with, with staff through this process, your continuous feedback. Without that, we couldn't continue to improve this process, so please keep that up.
And if I could piggyback, using the thought exchange has also given us a lot of feedback about process, so that I hope the public will see that we're taking into account some of those recommendations in our next enrollment plan. We'll actually be starting some of our engagement processes as early as March or April to get ahead of the process, so people feel like they can participate in a much more robust
Any further questions or comments? Would you like to make a motion, sir?
So Chair Mahaffey, given the hour at this time, I would like to move that the board move into closed session, to consider confidential personnel information protected under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A1, and A3, to consult with the Board of Education Attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided for under North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3, due to current litigation, Archer et al. v. Wake County Board of Education et al., 21CVS, 12227, Wake County Superior Court. And finally, to consider confidential student information protected under General Statute 115C-402 in the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, 20 United States Code 1232G.
Is there, okay, we have a motion and a second to enter into closed session for the reasons previously stated. Any comments? Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of entering closed session, please respond with a sign of "aye."
All right.
Any opposed? "Nay." We are now in closed session. Thank you.